...the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may at the council's discretion be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of three minutes tonight. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Since we have so many people here tonight, I'm going to ask that you please not repeat something that's already been said. If you have the same point as another, please just refrain and say, you know, I'll ask you to raise your hand and you can show how many are here on the same issue. If you have a different point of view that you would like to bring up, please come up and you have three minutes. So if you'd like to line up and get started, we're open for business. Come on, give your name and...
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Seal Beach. I commend your law enforcement agency for a job well done. First of all, I'm Randall Mossero, I'm the United States Representative for Union Members for the Preservation of Wildlife. I'm a wildlife activist, I'm also an actor in Hollywood and former law enforcement agent and retired. First of all, I'm here because of an issue that affects many people here and again, I want to say my condolences and sympathies going out to the people that lost their pets because of recent coyote attacks. We feel bad, nobody is ever happy when we lose a pet, they are family members and not just, not just something that you just throw away or disregard, a pet is supportive of you. But the simple fact is, we also have to be supportive of our wildlife. Being a union rep, being a wildlife activist and an actor, you have to look at both ends against the middle and say, okay, where do we come to play here? Simple fact is, millions of tax dollars is being spent killing wildlife and we could educate the people with that money and show them why killing the wildlife doesn't work, in this case coyotes. I was involved in your sister city over there, Carson, I was involved in Glendale, I was involved in Pasadena, I'm from Reno down south, I'm all over, but the simple fact is this, we're working together with the Native American community, which is Apache Running Hocke de Luby, First Nations and the Terokah Apache Nation, also with Dr. Robert O'Nois, who ran for governor of California, he's also here, also as vice, also for Vice President of California, Dr. Robert O'Nois. Basically, he ran for office, he is here tonight with the media and basically we're trying to impress upon you and please, work with us, let us sit down, let us sit down at the table, sorry, Channel 2, let us sit down at the table with you and educate you on why not to kill these animals and don't spend that money, because when you do, kill the alpha male and alpha female, that sends word to other coyotes to fill in their territory and start populating. Now you have six or eight mating pair instead of one or two. Now you have six, eight or 10 mating pair and they're all giving birth to how many coyotes do they have in the litter? Once the alphas are gone, you're in big trouble. Ask them on Melinda, ask the other cities that have now voted to stay away from coyote killing like Denver, Colorado, San Francisco, Pasadena, California, Glendale, they all voted to not kill coyotes and the reason why is because it was worthless. And you spend the money, you're gonna have three times as many, you're creating the problem, you're not getting rid of them. So let us sit here and educate you, we have funds to show, I have a 19-point plan that works on why not to kill coyotes. Bring in the professionals like Camilla Fox from Project Coyote, bring in Defensive Animals and Defenders of Wildlife, let us show you. All we can extend an invitation for all of you to come up to the Wolf Sanctuary near Victorville and get an education on wildlife, on why it doesn't be foolish to kill the wildlife. We're spending hundreds of millions of tax dollars killing the wildlife when it should be going to our schools, education, our senior citizens, our veterans coming back from the war. Let's stop it, let's start saving the wildlife and let's think smart and let's, let's do the right thing, okay? Thank you very much, I'm Randall Mossero, thank you.
Hello, my name is Apache Running Hocke de Luby and from the Moscuro Reservation in New Mexico. We all see these pictures, I can show you a million more of Hawaii. I only say, if there was traps out and you're walking, you don't see a trap and you get caught on it, do you feel helpless or helpful? I will say, I don't know, 100%, maybe 90% you'll say you feel helpless. What if you had children to go back to, but you couldn't go back to it because you're trapped? How would that feel? You got animals, we got animals. We've heard this probably a million times, I have to speak a priori in my language, but how would it feel if I went behind your yard and I hunted your animal? Or not me, but anybody. I hunted your dog, hunted your cat, your birds? Yeah, they say their windows, they went through windows here and all that. A lady earlier was being argumentative towards my dad, son Eagle Hawk, and he didn't argue back, he just said, "Madam, what would you, if you were in a different kind of communities that you didn't believe in, would you buy a house there?" Of course you wouldn't. I'm talking about, you know, different races, different colors, because nowadays, isn't this United States supposed to be free? Are we now prejudiced? Are we not freedom no more? I don't believe that we're free anymore. I don't believe that we exist anymore and I speak in that as a true American. I'm born in a reservation, raised in a reservation and respect all that come toward me and I go toward them. To me, just remember, councils or mayors, whatever you call yourselves, this is, you know, I'm from a true reservation, so we don't have councils like this, we have councils around our gatherings, but remember, it has to be...
One minute.
We want, one minute?
One minute left.
Oh, okay. Anyway, so I just want you to think about that. You know, I speak from my heart and truly, if you were trapped and you didn't see that trap, remember, there's solutions. Everybody here gets dog food, get dog food, buy dog food, 1999 Walmart, take it to the hills, you can still hear him holler, still hear him cry beautifully, but he'll stay up where it's light because you can buy the food, take it up there so they don't come down and give them water. There's solutions to everything. Thank you, my name is Apache Running Hocke de Luby, I'm a spokesperson for 390 nations, proud of indigenous people, not that you care, but I care, thank you.
I just want to say that I want to thank the city council and the mayor for the support that you've given Seal Beach with the problem that they've had. And also, I respect the protester's right to protest, but I'm not sure why they...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa McCurdy, thank you. But we've had a coyote committee, we've had meetings, we've had discussions and we've had a vote, so I think they're a little late to the party, I'm not sure why they're here tonight, but that being said, just today, because I know there's gonna be some discussion later and I'm not sure if you're gonna be talking about more ideas for future, but I just want to let you know that just today, because we get most of our information from a website, on the coyote website, kind of warning residents and keeping them up to date what happened, but just today, there's three posts. Desiree Cisneros, I don't know if she's here, but she said, "A coyote snatched my neighbor's dog three feet in front of her while she took her out to go potty in the early hours of yesterday morning. My neighbor screamed so loud and so much, the coyote wound up letting her go. She had surgery yesterday from her wounds and is being kept for a few days at the vet. The same night, another neighbor on the second floor had two coyotes pawing her screen door with her little dog growling at the door on the inside, on the other side." These coyotes are super brave. And then she went on to comment later that the coyotes had to go up a flight of stairs to go scratch her door to try and get at her dog. And then also today, Lisa Solomon posted, "Was just taking my dog out for a walk in Seal Beach shores off First and Marina. I was right outside of our HOA office asking our manager if it was really true that six coyotes had walked through here two days ago. She refused to answer me. All of a sudden, a coyote goes trotting by and goes straight through the parking lot. My bear spring in one hand and my leash in the other, I picked up my dog and held her in my arms. I was in shock, I felt very ill. My stomach is still upside down from the whole incident, I feel very sick, my stomach."
One minute.
Lastly, George, sorry, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, are you here? Oh, okay. He said, "At 10:45 a.m. today, I was taking my son to the beach, accessing it via the second street outlet. As soon as I hit the sand, a big-sized coyote walks right by us, 10 feet away. I ran at it, scared it off. You aren't safe anywhere at any time anymore." So I just wanted to let everybody know, that was just pulled out from today's activities. So it's still very much a problem and I know there's still a lot of work to be done, but again, thank you, city council, for doing something about it.
My name is Jill and I'm a resident of Orange County for over 30 years and currently reside in an area where coyotes are present and are seen and heard in our neighborhood regularly. I would like to start by expressing my deepest condolences to the residents of Seal Beach that have had a companion animal hurt or killed by a coyote. As a guardian to many different dogs and cats over the years, I can sympathize completely with the loss of a furry family member. With that being said, I need to express my complete disagreement with the idea that killing our local coyotes is the answer to the problem. I feel that with better understanding of coyotes and their habitat, people can coexist with these very adaptable canines. Coyotes are a very important part of a healthy ecosystem and do a very good job of keeping in balance our rodent and insect population, as well as removing dead or decaying flesh from other animals, which results in preventing disease. Experts and scientists over the years have found that the culling of these beautiful creatures has actually led to an increase in the coyote population. That may sound strange to hear, but the reality is that due to coyotes having an extraordinary social structure, the pack is kept in balance with the dominant pair in the group breeding once a year. If pack members are killed, the others begin breeding more often, almost like being given free range to ignore the social rules of the pack. These coyotes are forced to live among us and it is our ethical responsibility to learn to coexist. There's a perfect example of this concept of coexisting with coyotes being successful if we look to Denver, Colorado. A few years ago, residents were being confronted by coyotes moving into the city and areas of the surrounding county where humans reside. The Denver Parks and Recreation Department knew that based on previous studies of other urban areas, that killing and trapping or relocating the coyotes had not worked to solve the problem. Instead, they implemented a plan to, one, understanding coyote behavior slash danger, two, keeping pets safe, three, changing behavior of the problematic coyotes, and four, educating the residents on ways to decrease negative encounters with coyotes in their neighborhoods, as well as open trail space.
One minute.
Coyotes are incredibly intelligent and they have learned to thrive in close proximity to people. Using hazing techniques properly and consistently, as well as teaching residents how to properly ensure the safety of their companion animals, has been shown to be very effective in the overall goal of coexisting with wildlife. I am urging the Seal Beach city councils to stop killing the coyotes, effective immediately, and look to other cities that have implemented ethical, successful solutions. I also urge the Seal Beach residents to be open to learning how together we can all live side by side with our wild friends. Thank you.
Come on up, come on up.
My name is Sarah and I have lived in Orange County my entire life. I live in an area where there are coyotes who are present and seen often. I have a dog named Sebastian and a cat named Bella, they're my babies, they're my family. I don't even want to think about losing them because I would be devastated. Their lives are so precious to me. When coyote populations are strictly controlled and the numbers of coyotes are low, they reproduce at a much quicker rate to try to keep their family alive. Despite attempts all over the United States to control their populations by trapping, shooting and gassing them to death, their numbers have actually risen. This is in direct correlation with human intervention. If we kill coyotes, more will come to replace them. This is a well-established fact. If coyotes will replace those who are killed and if coyotes will return in greater numbers if many are killed, we can conclude that killing is not a solution and in fact may worsen the issue that residents are having. What we need are long-term, sustainable, non-lethal solutions. We need to look at what we can do that is humane and reasonable. Hands-on training for hazing, never leaving out food and trash, being extra cautious at night, never leaving dogs and cats outside without supervision. If coyotes have a reserve area, we can work to improve that area so they have somewhere they want to stay. If these steps to a solution sound unreasonable to anyone, moving to an area without wildlife should be considered. They were here first, 600 years ago, 60 years ago, we built on their land. We can't expect them to know that these homes are personal property because this land was their property first. Losing a loved one is heartbreaking, but gassing other animals to death is not going to bring the dogs and cats back. All it will do is cause more death. If we want to build houses and communities and live on their land, we need to learn to coexist.
Hello, my name is Harold Peck with Union Members for Perfection of Wildlife. I'm basically speaking to help come up with a better plan to manage coyotes. I live in Pacific Palisades area, I hike a lot in the mountains, I see coyotes almost every time I'm there. The Palisades has a major coyote concentration because of the huge mountains, which is higher than what you have here. And they are, the neighbors deal with them, just as you're going to be dealing with them because they're not going away. If you were to eradicate every single coyote in this, in this city and got rid of every single one, you're gonna find out that within a month, two months, six months, they're gonna be the same numbers again. So what's gonna happen is, as you guys are coming up with a plan, and I understand your position, your position is, you have people that are upset. I mean, if I'm gonna lose a pet, I'm gonna scream at you guys and say, "Fix it." And you guys are gonna be in a position where you need to fix that problem and you're like, if you don't fix it, you won't get voted back in, you've got very angry people. It's a very difficult situation. The problem is that the best thing to do is to try and work with the scientists and Project Coyote and other people that are familiar with how to deal with it, come up with plans, maybe do some fixing to strong grains to try and keep them from having the pathways to get to the areas where the people are. I think that if you could take some money and take a look at a project and come up with a comprehensive project of looking at where the problem areas are, how they're getting there, where the problems are and dealing with pathways fencing, structure control, trash control maybe, because like, for example, in the Pacific Palisades, trash day is Tuesday, you're gonna find the coyotes Monday night, that's the highest concentration. They know when trash day is because that's the feast. So you have to deal with maybe a little more intelligence on people covering their trash, thinking about more of the food, restaurants, maybe making sure their trashcans are closed because they can jump into a trashcan so easily, it's nothing to them. They can jump a six-foot fence like it's nothing. So the thing is, is to look at a comprehensive plan...
One minute.
Thank you. Between the city and the people that will come up with a project for both sides. Unfortunately, the gas system is not right. I understand that the company who hired me used CO2, which would be a really cruel way to kill them, and again, that's just a way of torturing an animal that got caught in a trap. That's not the problem. You know, like, other cities have come up with programs and that have been effective. I think you need to reach out to other cities that have coyote problems and what they've done to fix it, and I think that a very complex, comprehensive plan is gonna solve this problem for everybody, it'll make you happy, it'll make your citizens happy, rather than just coming up with a plan, a short-term plan, kill the coyotes, some are gonna be dead, the company that did the killing is gonna leave, the coyotes are gonna be back, the community's gonna be screaming again because their pets got killed. And I condone, I mean, losing a cat is tragic. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mary Ellen Healy and I'm a Seal Beach resident, I've lived here for quite a long time. I understand that there's a lot of grief and a lot of anger going on in this community right now and that's justified. It's a devastating thing to lose a pet. But at the same time, there are a lot of us in Seal Beach who are horrified by the action that this council has taken. And while I understand the motivation behind it, gassing these animals in a way that has been banned by the state of California for cruelty in terms of domestic pets, is not something that I want my city to be known for. I mean, we're better than this. We love animals, we are compassionate people, we are good people. And seeing us adopt this method that is scientifically unsound, based purely on anger and rage, is devastating to me. Because I want us to be a better community than I know we are. We have compassion. And I would implore the council to please pursue the other options out there because they are there. And I've heard that we have an education program that's been in effect for a year, I've never encountered it. I've spoken to a lot of my neighbors, they've never encountered it. Education programs aren't going to work if nobody knows about them. So I'm unwilling to write off education as a solution if we haven't really tried it. And the fact is, we haven't. I understand that there's an occasional newsletter or maybe a news article, but that's not enough. We need to make more of an effort to reach the people of this community. And I would also, if we are absolutely going to have to do this and it needs to be targeted at the specific problem animals, not just random coyotes that happen to be dumb enough to go onto the trap, that's not fair. And we need to do it in a way that is humane, not the gassing, that is a horrendous, horrific way to die. And even if you're a wild animal, it's not okay. So on behalf of the many, many people in Seal Beach who object to this very strongly on scientific, economic and moral grounds...
One minute.
Please do not pursue the youth and age of plan any further. Let's show the world the compassionate people that we are.
Hi, my name is Matthew Duncan, I live in the city of Orange, I'm a frequent visitor to your city. I must say, I'm the envious of you living in Seal Beach, you've got a really cool town here. That being said though, not to repeat what's already been said, but first of all, I have a question. How many coyotes were trapped and euthanized?
We'll get to the report.
You're gonna get to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, speaking of the word euthanized, you know what the word euthanized means? It's Greek for what? Good death? Death by asphyxiation in a gas chamber, in my opinion, is not a good death. But more importantly, because I'm not an expert, I talked to my veterinarian, my dog, I was planning to involve him in this and he's really upset that he's not part of it, but he's, he'll get over it. He and I walked, we walked, we'll be walking tonight, 1 o'clock in the morning, my neighbor gets off at 1:00, he and I walk in the city of Orange along Santiago Creek. I dare say the city of Orange has a lot more coyotes than Seal Beach, I've lived there 26 years. I've had numerous encounters with coyotes, we've had stare downs, basically you just maintain eye contact, walk right at them, they back off. That dog up there, he weighs 15 pounds, he's cream-colored, he couldn't fight his way out of a wet paper bag. He has had zero issues with coyotes. As a matter of fact, I was telling somebody out in the lobby, my issue is with domestic dogs off leashes, that's where I've had problems. It's not with coyotes. And somebody brought up to me earlier tonight, well, you know, it's just a matter of time before one of these coyotes attacks a person or a kid in Seal Beach, like that girl in the cemetery in Cypress. Statistically, in the United States, we have a grand total of 12 coyote bites. In the United States, we have a grand total of 4.7 million dog bites. So there's, to me, a much larger issue.
One minute.
Thank you. In closing, I would like to say, this is, it could be a defining moment for your city. I was looking online, the city of Irvine, which also probably has a lot more coyotes than Seal Beach, has a page on their website dedicated to coyotes and the coyote issue. The last sentence on that page reads as follows. Everyone's goal should be to peacefully coexist with our wild neighbors. And again, there are other cities, West Garden Grove, I talked to a guy who's very proud of the fact they wipe out every coyote in West Garden Grove, and if any more come, we're gonna wipe them out too. So you have a choice, you wanna be like West Garden Grove?
Yeah!
Or you wanna be like Irvine? I believe Irvine is a progressive city. And my hometown of Orange is also, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ann Stevherd and yes, I am as disturbed as everyone else about the coyote situation in our community. And I believe we could have done a better job at least for Leisure World. Our executive director tells me that we know where the coyotes are entering our community. And one of the access points is through the flood control channel. Grates were installed a month or so ago to keep coyotes out of Rossmore. Somehow, the county had funds to do that, but apparently, the county didn't have money for Leisure World, there were no funds. Somehow, there are funds from the city for the other districts for coyote control. Am I correct that there are no funds from the city for Leisure World? If so, why? And don't give me that private community answer, this is a citywide problem with no boundaries. The coyotes are coming from the Naval Weapons Station, they are coming from Gum Grove Park and from the wetlands entering Leisure World. Let us educate our residents, keep our pets under our control and restrict any sort of pet food items outdoor. But more than that, let's put greater emphasis on eliminating coyote access. I applaud the efforts that the city has made to educate us and to establish a subcommittee. However, we still need your commitment and support, the same as you have done for the other districts. Please help us in Leisure World. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shannon Moss, I'm representing Anticage as Los Angeles tonight. I want to apologize, I was supposed to have a prepared statement, but I work with youth in the community and one of them had a crisis today, so I spent my day dealing with that unpleasant situation. So I do apologize. And I also want to open with, I, my heart goes out to every single person in the community who's been negatively affected by the situation that's happening with the coyotes. No one likes to lose companion animals, I mean, all of us who are not in favor of the coyote cull or animal rights activists and we have rescues of our own at home that we spend our entire lives making sure their lives are better than our own. With that being said, to echo the sentiments of everyone else who's been up here tonight to discuss this issue, this is not the way to deal with the coyote problem. It's been demonstrated over and over again in other cities all over the country that this doesn't decrease the coyote population, overall it increases the coyote population. And I understand that the residents of Seal Beach would like the quickest possible solution to a heartbreaking issue, but unfortunately, for all of us, the quickest solution is not always the most effective or sustainable solution. And while this may look like it's going to work in the short term, it's not going to give the long-term results that the residents of Seal Beach and their companion animals deserve. So I would, I would like to, I would like the city of Seal Beach to open a dialogue with members of great organizations who do this full-time, Project Coyote, Defensive Animals, they have great programs that have been extremely effective for so many other cities all over the country. Because we want companion animals to live and we want coyotes to live and we want the residents of their neighborhoods to...
One minute.
Thank you. We want the residents of their neighborhoods to be happy and satisfied with the neighborhoods that they've chosen to live in. So with that being said, thank you. Reopen a dialogue, please.
No, my name is Dorothy, I live in Seal Beach. I would like to say that the, I would like to thank you for acting when you did and beginning the trapping program to protect our animals and to protect the people. It was reaching the level where it's a public health and safety issue for the residents, the young people and the seniors in Seal Beach. The studies and statistics... Beach have pointed out, as far as trapping, vary their, what happens after coyotes have been trapped and with the breeding and whether they're trapped or they're hunted. A lot of states have open hunting and open season on coyotes. They don't necessarily increase breeding, it depends on which studies you're looking at. So that's a controversial area. There have been successful trapping areas. They've been trapped routinely in Los Alamos, in Carson, in Garden Grove, recently in Garden Grove, and their problems have diminished greatly. Leisure World has already noticed a drop in the coyote activity, according to the Facebook posts and pages, and I think that might be why the areas of Boeing and on the hill have increased in the last couple of weeks, because they've kind of moved south a little bit. There, we did have, Long Beach in June had a problem with a skunk with rabies. If a coyote had managed, had gotten a hold of that skunk before it was identified and caught by Animal Control, we could have had an incident like what happened in New Jersey, where a coyote that tested positive for coyotes attacked three people. And now they're going through treatment for rabies. I have a granddaughter that's going to be moving here shortly. She's preemie, and it'll take her probably years to catch up in growth. Is she gonna be able to play in the park in electric, or is she gonna have to worry about a coyote attacking her like what happened in 2013 in Cypress, where a coyote attacked a baby? You know, I don't want to have to worry about her. And the mother was very close to that child, and a coyote attacked, bit the leg, and tried to drag the child off. Coyotes can jump great distances, great heights. The record for a dog is 66 inches clearing a broad jump without touching. There's competitions with board jumping, where essentially, they're jumping the fence. And the regular domestic dogs can...
Time.
Nine, nine and a half feet. So...
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Joyce, Ross Park, Ayo Town, Seal Beach. I'm gonna change the subject a little bit, sorry. We all know about coyotes, we've lived here a long time. There were two rabbits, two pet rabbits on the corner of 7th and Central. If everybody remembers that, that family never got over that. But anyway, tonight, I want to thank Alliance Club for getting the graffiti off the wall that backed up over there at the hill. And if you came over the bridge, you could see it for a couple of weeks. And they went and got the graffiti off. And I think they even got graffiti off of the house over there on the trail where the boat dock is, the boat repair shop is. That was all graffiti, blue and rocks, blue. And I want to thank Steve for saving our beach a couple of weeks ago. He had both jetties, people out there cleaning up that beach and the jetty. It was very, very nice of the people to come out and do that. So change the subject to other problems that we have in Seal Beach, and it's called West Nile Virus. And it kills people. And I know there's been at least four people that have had it, two have gone to the hospital. West Nile Virus. Running around, and we're talking about my little granddaughter, my daughter got bit. And she's an adult, and I said, "You gotta go to the doctor." And the other problem we have is crime. Criminals running around in our town. I don't know if anybody, these people have heard about it, but we had a stabbing right up here on Ocean and 8th Street between 3:00 and 5:00 in the morning. Now, what were they doing up here between 3:00 and 5:00 in the morning?
One minute.
One minute. Bridgeport, someone was trying to get into a lady's house, I know, took 15 minutes for the cops to get there. And now I've heard we have a peeping tom over here on the other side of town. We got other problems. Who's gonna pay for those problems? Where does all this mess pose a con from? I will be getting the audit of the water bill, and I will be getting whatever you were supposed to send back to the Grand jury about the pensions. I wanted to talk about this. That's shameful, to take taxpayers' money. Why don't you have somebody also pay somebody to do a rebuttal? That's shameful, to take taxpayers' money, when we don't even know what the new technology's gonna be. We do have to vote on that. I don't know if you're aware, but in 2008, we voted that if you wanna go utility tax now, we vote on it. Thank you.
Hi. I wasn't planning on talking, so I didn't have a speech or anything, but my name is Lindsay. I'm a wildlife biologist. I live in Long Beach, but I'm from Seal Beach, and my dad lives in Seal Beach. And I've worked as a biologist in Orange County for 15 years, and with coyotes on several projects. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that were said again, not to be redundant, but no one's debating that there's not a problem with urban coyotes and people's pets and interactions. It's obvious. I mean, people have lost their animals, and it's, my mom's lost a cat in Lakewood to a coyote of all places. My whole point is that the trapping program just isn't effective. And while it may show signs of being effective short-term in a year or two, like everyone said, just the biology of the species, you are gonna end up with more coyotes. And unless you could wipe out every single coyote from every county in Southern California, you would still end up eventually with coyotes coming back into the area because of the open space on the refuge and the weapons in Bosa Chica. They're adaptable, and they've adapted to live with people, and they've adapted to not fear people in urban areas. I work in the field in Southern California, in Riverside, Orange County, in open space areas, and I see coyotes every day. And not once does one ever run up to me. They see me, and they run away. Because they still see people as, you know, they don't wanna be around people. But in urban areas, I think they've lost their fear because we see them, and they're not supposed to be on our block or walking down our street, so we kind of just run away, or we don't haze them like they do in country areas. Like in other states, they'll shoot at them. They'll send their dogs out on them. They still have a fear of people. Whereas in Seal Beach and here, you can't shoot off guns at coyotes down the street, obviously, but there's techniques you can use that people have talked about to haze them, to get them more afraid of people again. And it's gonna take a couple of generations, and it took several generations for them to get this bold. And it'll take several generations for them to then go back the other way.
One minute.
But long-term, that's the only thing that's going to work. Trapping them, especially in box traps, most coyotes aren't even gonna go into a box trap, so you're gonna catch a handful of coyotes when there's thousands in the surrounding area. And it's just gonna open up a niche, and you're gonna have more coyotes. So I'm not debating that there isn't a problem, and something needs to be done, but trapping them isn't a long-term solution to anything. It's just not gonna help, so.
Hello, my name is Joe Salaro, and I kind of met all you at one point in time. I've lived in Seal Beach for 50 years, which is odd because my wife thinks I'm only 47. So when Ms. Deaton rented to my mom over on 7th Street, don't tell her that I'm repeating myself, I promise I won't do that. I'm not here to take a side, to point fingers. I do need to say, though, that there's a solution, but you're never gonna make everybody happy. And all you people sitting up there are trying to do that, and that's one of the most difficult jobs I can imagine. I wouldn't want it myself. What I can say is, living here for 50 years, I love my town, and I think the word "kill" in front of anything is the wrong way to look at it. If there's a solution, it's out there. If, and when I heard these people talking, I can kind of see the wheels spinning up there, because I know you're all blank, wonderful people. And I can see maybe that there's a dollar figure you're attaching to fences, or moats, or skyrockets, or whatever solution you're coming up with. So my wife decided that we should find a solution. And I said, "There are no solutions. Let them find it, they're the experts." So Little Salaro Kitchen would like to put up the first $500 to any solution that you have that doesn't include killing an animal. So you know where we are, and we respect any decisions you make. We're right there, so you can just hold up a sign that says "Send Check," and we'll be here. So we respect you, we appreciate it, but please do some thinking. And for those of you who have lost animals, I totally get it. My dog is probably the third most important person in my life, and I wouldn't want to be in that situation. So I thank you, and let us help, but let's stop killing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlene Warner. Been here before. Thank you very, very much for your decision to trap. I live in Leisure World, I have seen a big difference. I have always been one coyote in two weeks since we trapped in there. It's helped tremendously. I also, this week, I had a talk with Animal Control that cruises the area. It was a very interesting talk. He said, "There's bad coyote, there's a bad group of coyotes." He's never, ever seen it like this, and they needed to go.
Charlene, could you pull the mic down to your mouth? That's the TV mic.
He said, "There is a really bad group of coyotes, they needed to go." And that's Animal Control saying something like that. All these people that don't want us to get rid of coyotes don't realize there are some bad ones out there that need to go. These were brazen coyotes going into people's houses, which we were called liars by the protesters, saying that didn't happen. A lot's going on that's been very painful to the city from outsiders. And I just wanna thank you very, very much for listening to the city and reacting with us. It's not a knee-jerk reaction, as we've been called. You know, it's been a long decision for all, and just thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Andrea Gallow, and I'm concerned because of the policies that Seal Beach has adopted so far as having potential to affect the coyote population of the surrounding communities. I'm a resident of Long Beach and Belmont Heights, and we do have coyotes there, and I see them. In fact, just a month ago, I was walking my three dogs at night, like I do every night, and I saw a coyote not more than 30 feet away from me. And I was, I wasn't afraid, because I know I work with biologists, and I field calls about coyotes visiting homes, so I knew what to do. And immediately, I dropped what was in my hands, not my leash, not my leashes, and I clapped really loudly five times, and it scared the coyote. In fact, all the dogs in the neighborhood started barking, and the coyote ran off. And I think one of the worst things we can do as residents is to not do anything when we see a coyote, because once we start ignoring them, the coyotes lose their fear, and I believe it's our responsibility to keep them wild. So I urge you, and I want them around, because I'm concerned about the rodent population exploding near my home. We already have a lot of squirrels, and I see skunks, and I'm afraid of that skunk because I don't want them to spray on my dog, or any of my dogs, or my neighbor's dogs. And so I want the coyotes there. And I'm concerned that with killing coyotes in nearby communities, it's the same population of coyotes that are in my neighborhood. And people say, "Well, it's getting better right now, but just wait till breeding season in early 2015, and then we'll be able to see really what the effects are gonna be." So...
One minute.
Thank you. I have confidence that the residents of Seal Beach, once armed with knowledge, and that all the information, the educational materials can get out to everybody. I was a resident over here, so she didn't know of any Coexistence Campaign that was going on with the city. I know you said you've tried that for a year. But I have confidence that once the information gets out there and people change behaviors, that we can, that the coyotes can learn to get their fear back of humans, if it's been lost, and to become more wild. And I urge you to consider following in the footsteps of the city of Calabasas and other cities that have adopted coexistence with coyote plans. Thank you.
I apologize to the audience, because I'm once again going to change the topic. I'm Lonnie Winkler. I'm the president of the Golden Rain Foundation in Leisure World, which of course is where I live. I had this long dissertation, thinking I had five minutes, to tell you everything that we contribute to the city, and what the city doesn't contribute to us that we pay for. But just know that there's an $11 million operating budget for our streets, our sewers, everything else, and we pay for that, not the city. However, it isn't really an issue about who pays for what. The real issue is, is the cooperation that needs to exist between Leisure World and the city of Seal Beach. One of the major challenges to our elderly population is food resources. Now, the knee-jerk reaction is, of course, you have the dollar store, you have Meals on Wheels, you have senior meals, you have the food bank trucks, you have, you've helped pay for access up to the grocery stores. However, what I'm concerned about, and what we're concerned about, is the availability of prepared foods. Service attention spans, arthritic shaking hands, and small appetites make purchasing and cooking food a real concern. I even have it for myself. And as you may know, this fire that took place on October 2nd, and kudos to the fire department who managed to limit the fire to one unit, was because somebody was French frying potatoes on the stove, walked over to a neighbor for just a moment, and she lost her whole unit and everything in it. And incidentally, she didn't have insurance. So we're experimenting with how to bring fresh food and prepared meals into our community. And our community is private property. Our vending machine cafe has been extremely popular, and you know why? It's packed at night, because people go in, they buy food, and they take it away. So we wanna bring in fresh food, and we wanna bring in a farmer's market. But evidently, there is a problem getting the vendor trucks registered and permitted to do it. So I'm asking you, is if there's any way we can resolve this issue on a one-time basis just to see if it will work? If our population will respond to having a series of fresh produce and prepared food trucks in, let's say, once a week? And I'm hoping we can get this resolved between us. What can we do to make it work? I know our executive director, Randy Ankeny, is working hard on this project, but I'm coming to you personally and on behalf of our residents to please, let's try to make this work, just at least once. After that, possibly, we can pay the fees. But we would like to do it once, and I thank you for your time. This is a great city to live in.
If there are more people that wanna talk, would you come line up, please, so we can do this quickly? Thank you.
My name is Gretchen Shagun. I live on the hill for the last 24, 25 years. I wanted to speak before we close tonight, because I think the protesters here maybe have the wrong impression of us. You know, having had to deal with coyotes for 24 years, jumping over my back fence because my property backs up to the backfield, they've always come over. But I've watched it progressively get worse and worse over the years. Gordon knows, he lives three doors down from me. He has the same issues. It's gotten to the point now that, you know, it's really, really bad in the last few years. I don't think the protesters realize that this has been going on for almost a year of discussions with the council, community meetings, town hall meetings, and it was not an easy decision to decide to trap the coyotes. We're all animal lovers. Fortunately for me, I... Fortunately for me, I've never lost a pet, but I have friends that have. Um, this was not a decision where we all of a sudden just said, "Let's go kill the coyotes, that'll be great." Um, this is a difficult decision. It was never a good deci, I mean, it's, you know, which is worse? You know, the animals being killed in Seal Beach, or the coyotes? Well, we were driven to that, and we were so appreciative that the council finally heard us and finally was able to help us with the things that we've been stressed about for a good year or two now, with the increase of coyotes in the community. So, it was never a snap decision. I don't think the protestors realize that we've already had people come in, Animal Control doing slide shows, wildlife people talking to us. We've already met with the other, um, communities at the town hall meeting at McGaw School about how we were gonna work together to overcome this problem. If the state of California would change their laws so that we could relocate coyotes, I think many of us who are positive for trapping at the moment would reconsider for relocation.
One minute.
Um, possibly a spay and neuter program. I know we've talked about that before. So, I think that, I wanted the protestors to know that the residents of Seal Beach feel deeply about this issue, and we also are animal lovers, and we totally understand. A lot of the things they've been telling us tonight, we've already heard over and over before, and we've tried, um, getting everyone involved. We've tried numerous hazing techniques. The other day at 1:00 in the afternoon, I turned my car around on Catalina, because there was a coyote just walking down the sidewalk, and I chased him with my car through the neighborhood, honking my horn as loud as I could, screaming out of my car window at him. It took a while, but finally, he went over one of the back fences to the field. But this coyote was not afraid of me. Um, so, I just, you know, wanted to say that I appreciate the council in helping us with this difficult decision, but we were kind of driven to being a desperate situation. Thank you.
I didn't, I, I'm not really used to this, but I want to do it right.
Okay, give us your name.
Mayor, council members, City Hall members, police department, and whatever you are. Okay. Um, I had something recently happen. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Judy DiEppa Fanoio. Um, I had something in the last two days that happened that really did. It kind of fixed everything for me, because each night, every night, the alpha dog has come beneath my windows. I ended up naming him Joe. So, there's some personal going on here. And, uh, I have some American Indian in my background, so maybe that's that part of But when my neighbors the next day told me that they lost their bijon, and they have a six-foot fence, trauma has not left their household, and they walked their two children over the bridge to go to dinner, this is about a few weeks later, and they found their little bijon's head in the dirt as you go over the bridge, and as they head toward the restaurants, their little girl completely lost it. That little girl will never, ever lose that, ever. Whatever attempts, whatever attempts are made to turn this around, where Seal Beachers can step out their door, or build fences to protect their children and their animals, and that work, that's where my heart is. That's it. Go.
Hi, I'm Charles Antos. I want to differentiate between, uh, coexistence with coyotes and problem coyotes. Uh, there's one incident where a woman went down, uh, walked down with her two dogs, and there were three coyotes on the street. Two of them took off when the dogs barked. One of them turned around and decided, "Oh, this is lunch," and, and she went back upstairs. Okay? That's a problem coyote, not the ones that took off. Councilman Levitt told us that there was a woman in Leisure World who went out to get her morning paper. Opened the door, coyote went in, took her cat, and ran back out the door, ate her cat. That's a problem coyote. Now, how is that woman in Leisure World supposed to coexist? Not get another cat? How's the woman who's, was chased back up, or ran back up, her stairs, to get away from the coyote? How is that woman supposed to deal with coexistence with the coyotes? Open the door, let the coyote come in, and eat the dogs? That's a problem coyote. You need to deal with those. Now, just because coyotes run down the road, and when they see you, they run off, well, they're not causing problems. The ones that are going in to Leisure World houses and taking the cat, that's a problem. And the ones that chased when you move back up stairs, that's a problem, and scratch on the door, those are problems.
Well, Mayor, City Council, Charmin Snow, Old Town, I just want to remind you why you decided to trap in the first place. These animals, these dogs, were going to the concerts in the, in the park with their owners before they were cruelly killed by vicious animals. These cats played on the computer with their owners. They were indoor animals, and they were caught outside. These are the people, these are the animals that are on the Christmas cards that people of this town sent out because they were considered family. This is who you are trapping for, and we appreciate that you got your stuff in motion and are getting it done, and we're... How many, how many people in this audience are here to support the mayor and the city council for taking this action? Okay, Charmin, you need to talk to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, okay, one, one more. Okay.
My name is Barbara Diaz. I don't live in Seal Beach, but I, mayor and, and council people, I have relatives who lived in Leisure World. They passed away. And in all the years that I've been visiting them, I've never seen a coyote. Um, I love animals, I love the wild animals, I love domestic animals, and I feel for the people who've lost their animals. But I saw one coyote two years ago, and I went to visit my aunt before she passed away, and it was at nighttime, and I, I know there's a lot of rabbits, and I know that when there's a lot of food for them, they will come and eat. I never understood why they have so many rabbits there. I don't know if they're wild, or if they're brought in by, by people at Leisure World, but, um, I don't believe they should be gassed. It's horrible, and that's an old way to do things. Um, I know that when you, um, kill off feral animals, like feral cats, they do overpopulate, so that the coyotes will overpopulate again, and the problem just continues. I have lived in, um, North Al, North Los Angeles, and I, I stayed there for a couple of years, and we lived up in the hills, and I, there were coyotes and raccoons everywhere. And I love them, I, I let them know I'm out there. I had two cats with me. My cats with the skunks and the raccoons never bothered my cats. Um, I let them know when I was going outside. I was a little in fear when I'd see wild animals, because they have claws, and I, you know, I don't, I don't carry weapons. Um, so there is that little fear that I had, but there's also a respect that I have, because I believe they have a right to exist with us. God made them, just as God made us. And, um, I, like I said, I did lose my cat to a coyote. Um, I've lost many cats when I lived in Los Angeles to packs of dogs. But I will say one thing, I would rather lose my animals to other wild, to wild animals than to people. I know there's a lot of people who harm animals, and that would infuriate me, um, and that they never get punished enough. But why are the coyotes and other animals being punished? And I don't understand that. I don't understand all the animals in the shelter being euthanized for not doing anything wrong, other than being not wanted. So, we have to come up with something. We have to learn to coexist as an animals, and they keep the typhus fever down, they keep the distemper down, they keep the rodent population under control. Let's just make some noise, and let's not be so lazy, and always on our cellphone, and be alert, and, and clap, and do other things that people have said we can do to let them know we are here. Um, when I encounter a coyote up in where I live, I just made a lot of noise, and that probably because I was, I was afraid. Um, like I said, they have weapon, they have claws, I don't, they have sharp teeth, I don't. So, thank you very much.
Is there someone that can help him with the microphone?
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
I, I wasn't planning on talking, but I've been listening to everybody. And my name is Sunny Eva Hawk. I'm Apache, from New Mexico. If, if, I've heard the people say that they cannot coexist, and the only thing that reminds me of is what people thought when they moved into my ancestors' country. They couldn't coexist. We were called animals because we took scalps. Well, what people don't realize is that whites started taking scalps. There was a bounty on us, and the only way they could prove that they killed so many graves, so many women, so many children, they had to fake scalps. So, we started taking scalps. And it's, thank you. We, we started taking scalps. This is my dog Peanut, he's my bear dog. But you can't coexist. The only reason that the coyotes are coming in and, yeah, taking your pets, because they cannot get anything else to eat? You people moved here, uh, your ancestors moved here, they took over their hunting grounds, and there's no more animals for them to hunt. So, when they see a dog, or a cat, or a sick bird, that's food. And they will jump a 10-foot fence, so it doesn't matter how high your fence is. Thank you. But that, that's basically what I, what I wanted to say is that you're doing it to yourselves. You're moving into their territory. You're driving the food from them, so therefore, they have to see, that's why the bears are turning your, your trash can over to find food. The coyotes find animals. That is food to them. It's your pet. Look at my pet. He's a, his name is Peanut, and I would hate to lose it to a coyote, but because of that, I'll die before he dies. I was in Vietnam for eight years, and that was... Time. Yeah, okay.
Hey, do you wish to speak, sir? Come forward, please.
My name is George. I live in Leisure World. I've known Seal Beach since I was, uh, in elementary school. I chose to live here. I have, uh, been in the Pacific waters from Santa Barbara to, uh, San Diego as a child growing up here, and never did I see a coyote in our small, little beach towns. I also lived up in the San Gabriel Valley. Did we have coyotes? Yes. They were there all the time. That was where we expected them to be, not down here on the beach. I have nothing to back this up, except my own experience. I do not believe that this is a natural habitat for the coyote. I've never seen one on a surfboard. I've never seen one sunbathing, and when I go to the sushi bar, there's never a coyote I don't understand everything that I've read, and everything that has been said here. Coexist? Yes. But to coexist where we're all supposed to be, to be at the mountains, to be at the desert, not down on the beach, I don't believe a coyote wants to be on the beach, or ever did want to be on the beach. But then, thank you for listening.
Mayor, City Council, um, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I was just coming here to show my support for, uh, coexisting with wildlife. I have been living in Orange County for the last 20 years. I have horses, so, um, just by nature of where we're at, um, I have coyote sightings. I deal with coyotes almost every day. My main concern is, I have lost, because I pretty much, most of my life, I've lived in areas that have bordered areas where there's gonna be a lot of coyote populations. I have lost both cats and dogs, and I had to learn that I couldn't leave them out at night if they were to go outside at night. I had to bring them with me. I've had friends that have lost coyotes, I mean, uh, sorry, their little dogs, little animals to coyotes at night. I understand it's a problem, and, and we can argue back and forth, uh, about this issue and never really come to a resolution, but the bottom line is, I'm, I'm appealing to our basic, our morality. If you are going to be taking care of these animals by killing them right now, which I don't think is a sustainable effort, gassing them, I think, is indefensible. It's indefensible. I, I don't know how anybody here can sleep at night knowing that that is how they are killing these animals. Um, I have, I have dealt with them, like I said, over the years en masse. And I think if we can actually sit down and start looking at the facts, we can start making an intelligent argument towards how we can make this sustainable. The knee-jerk reaction in any population with problem animals, be it bears, coyotes, mountain lions, is to kill it. Just kill it. Unfortunately, we've been conditioned that way in this society. If it's a problem, we kill it. It's all American, right? We get our guns out, we kill it. It's not a solution. It's not a solution. This isn't, this isn't the way to deal with this as a society, that we can look ourselves in the mirror and actually think that we're making a difference. I am totally, totally understandable of the people that have lost their animals, having been in their shoes, but we need to find a way, thank you, to sustain this. Let's look and explore the technology that's been implemented by other cities, please. Please. I don't think we should all be at each other's throats because ultimately we love the animals. This is for the animals. And I just don't think that the way that we're dealing with this is gonna, is gonna make a difference. I really think it makes us morally on the bad side of things. Thank you for your time.
Saying no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing now and we will continue on. Do we have a city attorney report?
Nothing to report tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, Mayor. One item tonight, as all of you know, today is Columbus Day and many public agencies across our state and the nation recognize Columbus Day as a holiday, as has been practiced in Seal Beach, however, although we're closed, a city hall in our maintenance yard is closed to the public. It is a regular workday for our staff. For the last eight years, we've been able to utilize this day to focus on staff development and training, which as you know, one of your council goals is to enhance professional development for our staff. And I'd like to publicly thank Patrick Gallegos and Tina Knapp from my office who coordinated several activities for our staff today. Our focus was primarily on building and supporting our team and all of our employees were represented today showcasing support for their favorite sports team. And so on behalf of the staff team, I want to thank the council for your ongoing and your continued support of this effort and giving us the ability to utilize this day for our staff to spend together. Also want you to know it meant a lot to me personally. I know all of you are quite busy and there's a lot on your plate right now. So those of you that were able to break away and come spend some time with the staff, I know all of us truly appreciated it. We did have a little team building exercise, pickleball at the tennis center today. It was quite interesting to say the least, but for those of you out there that do play pickleball and looking for some new members on your team, I would encourage you to reach out to council members Mike Webbitt and Gary Miller, both who were very competitive today. So, thank you for that.
All right. And now on to council comments. Councilman Shanks?
Yes, I have a number of things. One of the things that's been brought up here is that the council has not looked into things to do about coyotes. And going back to last November, we've looked at a lot of things. That's why they finally arrived at the, almost the final thing, which was trapping them, which obviously spending the money the city didn't want to do, but the coyote problem was getting very serious. Another thing is, I think because of the drought, but I'm not sure what it is, the coyotes have become much more active, much more belligerent, much more dealing with mankind lately than they were previously. I lived on the hill for 44 years and we always had coyotes up there. Their occasional lead was a cat or a dog was caught, but they, but we also had raccoons and stunks and rabbits and all, a whole range of other little critters, none of which exist there now. And I think because of the drought, but that's again, somebody speaking as a scientist who's not, that that's probably what has caused it. Secondarily, speaking at the city, we have a unique organization in this city and a couple of their driving forces were here. And that is, we have a no-kill animal care center, which is really quite unique for both cities. So people are here complaining because we're killing a few coyotes when the cities north and south of us, their animal care centers are euthanizing all sorts of animals. So I think you, Seal Beach ought to be praised for supporting the no-kill policy for animals, which is really something we do.
Councilman Webbitt?
We will be receiving the report from staff on where we are and what our direction is going to take. I reserve my comments for later.
Always there are comments about the coyotes, but I would like to mention that on October the 4th on Saturday, 40 people showed up at Edison Gardens to work on the gardens. And it was unbelievable. They were wheelbarrows, rakes, shovels. And if those of you did not know where Edison Garden is, it's by Edison Park and College Park West. The people there worked hard, they're proud of their plots and they're proud to be citizens of Seal Beach. And I just want to commend them publicly for coming out on a very hot day and making those gardens look like Rogers Gardens.
Councilman Miller?
The only thing I'd like to say is thank you to every single person that came out. You were all very, very gentlemanly and ladylike and it was a pleasure to listen to every single comment and to take it into consideration. So thank you for a good time and oral communications. Thank you. Okay, with that, I think we will move along then to the council item A, the Coyote Strategic Trapping Update Report. Councilman Shanks already introduced this, but I, I would like to go back and talk about what we have done for a year. We have taken a very proactive stance ever since November 2013, when we brought together people from all over California, from Fish and Wildlife, from the Animal Center, to the Navy, to the biologists, trying to find a solution that would work for Seal Beach. And our residents have carefully tried to learn the haze. We've shown videos, we've sent videos home, we've had advertisements in the weekly newspaper every week. We have sent home flyers. I personally have sent out newsletters. It's been in our rec guide. We have taken every type of notification that we can. We've put up signs. We're not done because we're taking a multifaceted approach. But part of that multifaceted approach came from the committee that we put together to look at it. And that was to begin a culling process while we continue an in-depth training. Now, very soon, we are having someone come out from back east, from the Humane Society, who will be teaching us even more aggressive hazing techniques. We aren't done. We do not consider trapping to be the only answer. In fact, we know that trapping must be combined with education. Trapping must be combined with finding those who feed animals. We understand it's a complicated issue. We are not taking a simple way out. At this point, what I would like to say is that the council approved two two-week trapping trials and that our city manager will now report on the program that we began at the last council meeting. City Manager Jill Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I report on the progress of that trapping effort, I'd like to highlight for you a few other strategies the city's worked on since the last council meeting to deter coyotes. Number one, we've partnered with other agencies and property owners to make it more difficult for coyotes to enter neighborhoods by repairing and installing barriers. The DWP property owners have agreed or are in the process of repairing the fence at First and Marina. With respect to Gum Grove Park, the Los Cerritos Wetlands Authority has agreed to repair the fence line on its property. And third, flood channels adjacent to Leisure World, the Orange County Flood Control District has already installed a gate in one of their channels. And staff's working on the installation of two more gates in channels that serve as entryways by coyotes into Leisure World as well as College Park East. I think it goes without saying that some of these efforts, as you know, in working with regional agencies do take a little bit of time. So I'm pleased that we've made some progress in that effort to get partnerships built so that we can help move some of these things forward. And second, the city's also ramped up its education efforts, understanding that trapping, as the mayor's indicated, is only a short-term solution. In that regard, staff's developing a neighborhood program, which is modeled after our Neighbor for Neighbor program, as you know, is our city's neighborhood crime prevention program that will strive to educate and train residents in each of your districts on the importance of reporting coyote sightings and attacks. The program will also provide more intensive hazing training and work with residents to develop solutions that are tailored to their specific neighborhood. Secondly, the city recently partnered with the National Arm of the Humane Society, Mayor as you mentioned, who has agreed to provide two days of intense hazing training and coyote education on December 2nd and 3rd for our community. The society will offer training to residents and city staff and more details as we get closer to that timeframe will be coming forward to the community to make you aware of that. Third, as you have mentioned, the council appointed Coyote Committee and will reconvene at the end of this week to continue their efforts on a draft, comprehensive coyote management plan. This plan will be a guiding document that will focus on short and long-term solutions as well as local and regional approaches. And as you know, those, both those short and long-term solutions were presented to you at the last council meeting. Following your direction at the last council meeting to move forward, staff's been working very closely with our contract animal services provider in Long Beach on areas to focus strategically on areas of pet attacks and coyote sightings over the last several months and looking at placing and setting those traps in strategic locations throughout Seal Beach. However, before we place, before placing traps, staff had to ensure that the public and their pets, as well as their children, would not be harmed by the installation of a trap, that the city had permission to install traps in areas and on property that was not owned by the city of Seal Beach, and that traps would be placed in locations where they could not be easily tampered with or stolen. And unfortunately, this week, two locations, traps were tampered with. So after a lot of staff and efforts and strategic consideration, we were able to identify six different strategic areas in the city where traps could be placed. On October 6th, it was one week ago today, trapping began and after one week, three coyotes were captured at three different locations and euthanized. Trapping will continue for three additional weeks as approved by the council at the last council meeting. As you know, you approved two, two-week trapping efforts, so we've gone through one of those weeks. And we will continue to work on short-term and long-term recommendations that were provided to you and directed to staff at your last council meeting. That does conclude staff's update at this point. I will remind you that this is a receive and file item tonight. There's no further direction that staff needs unless your direction does change. We do have, if you have technical questions about this process, we do have a representative here from the trapping company that can address some of your technical questions. And Mayor, I'll hand it back over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions of the staff report now would be time to ask those questions. Councilman Webbitt?
Yes, one objection to trapping is the way that we've been euthanizing coyotes. CO2 has been the air, the type of product they've been using. I would like to ask our critter busters representative here, why he hasn't been able to switch over to something that is actually recommended by the Humane Society of the United States? And that is sodium pentobarbital. And right now, I object to the trapping under the present circumstances. If you could please enlighten me as to why we can't switch.
Absolutely. Actually, California law is actually pretty clear and pretty concise that we have to euthanize on-site. The products that you're talking and mentioning about using would have to be with a licensed veterinarian. It would have to be on-site. We can't take an animal, move it somewhere else, it would cause undue stress to the animal and it's illegal. There's only two really methods that we can actually legally use, and that's shooting, which is illegal in the city. And it's also carbon dioxide. Carbon dioxide is actually recommended in the guidelines set forth by the American Veterinary and Medical Association. It's also a very humane way to go. It has basically virtually no odor to it. It offers anesthetic effects when you euthanize. And it's one of the methods that most wildlife companies utilize.
So there is no way that you, as a professional in the field, can administer sodium pentobarbital?
Not unless we're a licensed staff member of a veterinarian.
And how, and how would you, if you had the capability legally of doing this? How would you administer it?
The sodium or any other...
Sodium.
... compound?
Yeah. The one that is recommended by the...
You would have to be licensed as a veterinarian.
And how would you administer it if hypothetically you were?
It would be on a, it's actually called a pole. It's actually, it's blushed a lot. They actually don't do it with wildlife because if you poke it and it breaks, which often happens, the needle breaks. You can't just go up to it and put the needle just like a doctor uses you in injection. It's a wild animal. One of the alpha males that I personally actually took last week, tried attacking me. It's, it's not safe. It's not safe for the operator. It's not, not anything that our company would do, nor any other wildlife.
Okay. I'd like to ask the audience, please now to listen. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's all I, on that.
I, my, my earlier opinion about this was we really didn't have a choice. We've been losing too many pets, both on Leisure World and throughout the city of Seal Beach. Everything I've read about what we're doing now and the way that we're doing it strikes me as wrong. Yes, we have to eliminate the threat to the people and the pets, but I, I'm dead set against gassing them that way. So if we can find another way of dealing with them, of putting them out of their misery very quickly and painlessly and without causing undue fear, then I'd be in favor of that. But I don't want to kill a coyote, but I don't want my coyote to kill my pets and injure any of my neighbors and friends in Leisure World. I think we need to find a better way of disposing of them. As an alternative, I, since we are uniting now with Humane Society of the US and they're going to teach us additional advanced methods of hazing, which I know includes shooting paintballs at them, actually injuring them, scaring them, but more than scaring them, putting an image in their minds that humans present a danger and they've got to stay away. I'm just going to make a motion, and you can vote me down if you want, that we put the trapping on hold until we've had an opportunity to try the advanced hazing method. If that doesn't work... If the killings, if the killings of the pets continue, then I am, then I am definitely in favor of continuing to trap them. I want to give it an opportunity to see if we can deal with this without killing them. If we can't, then we need to eliminate what has become the enemy. So, and I'm, I'm against gassing them.
Is there a second? Okay. That dies for lack of a second. Any other comments?
Does any other trapping agency perform this?
I've worked for over five different wildlife control agencies. I've also worked for the state. CO2 is widely used for wildlife control. It's actually recommended by the American Veterinary and Medical Association. It is an extremely humane way to euthanize an animal. It's also safe for the operator, like myself, and also for the public.
Does the animal suffer?
No. It offers anesthetic effects.
Audience, audience, please, we listened to you. Now it's your turn to listen. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. It's recommended for animals up to 70 pounds or so. It's, it's a standard way to euthanize. I said, unless we have a veterinarian on-site that's willing to go on-site, and it has to be done right then and there. It can't be moved. You can't take the, the animal in the back of your pickup... It can't be moved, you can't take the, the animal in the back of your pickup truck or any other location and move them somewhere else. That would cause undue stress to the animal. It's quick, it's fast, and it's painless.
Why, as Councilman Levitt indicates, why is that identified if they don't actually do it?
What's that?
I'm not going to try to repeat-- Sodium pentobarbital?
Why do they, why do they, why do they acknowledge that, but yet they don't have a method of--
A veterinarian has to do it.
Do other, do other trappers do that?
No. I had, I worked for one company that used a veterinarian to actually do that, and it was just, you have the same crowd that comes out, she lost her practice. It's, it's a controversial issue, and it's not something that it's done. So, the company is actually the largest company in Southern California that I worked for, and they no longer do it as well. So--
Are there any other questions?
I have one more. All right. You see the late-night news, and you see that these bears come down out of the countryside and it's walking through the foothills, bobcats, mountain lions occasionally come out of the woods and they're in somebody's backyard, they're taking a swim in the pool. Animal Control comes out, tranks those animals.
It's usually actually Department of Fish and Game.
Fish and Game.
We've actually partnered with them on--
Will, they will take the now sleeping, tranquilized animal, put him into a truck, and relocate him.
So we go in California.
They take him out of the area, they don't take him just a few blocks, and so come back. Obviously, something attracts him there. They will take him far away where they won't come back. So, I think our, our main problem is that state Fish and Wildlife doesn't allow us to do with coyotes what they do allow to do with bears and wild cats. And I want to know why they can't change those rules to accommodate everybody here.
It's actually a valid question, and I'm going to actually tell you a personal story. I actually, we rescued some raccoons. We were trying to find a shelter that would actually take the raccoons to just nurse them back so, until they're old enough to be released in the area. I personally housed those raccoons in my house while we tried to find an area to, that would take them. Unfortunately, my dog ended up on contracting distemper because of it. It's, it's a really real problem, we couldn't find any place to actually take the raccoons. Everybody turned us down because of that exact reason. It, it poses a lot of problems. Relocation is not a humane option.
Of course not. Neither is death.
No. But neither is spreading distemper to a larger population now. If you're taking a disease from Seal Beach and you take it off to the mountains, you're now destroying the population there.
Can we, can we talk with our state reps and find out why we can't relocate them and request permission to be able to do that?
We received something this week, I believe, an email that asked us to do some lobbying. So if that's your desire, that you would like to--
Absolutely.
--begin lobbying, then I think we should direct staff to use a lobbying arm to get those laws changed at the state level. If I remember, you asked the Assemblyman to do something about it.
I did. And he didn't answer.
Yeah.
If you could relocate--
He did, he said they were out of session.
Right. If you can move a mountain lion, you can certainly move a coyote.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Second.
Please vote. That's five zero, to receive and file. All right, we'll move on now to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to receive?
I have to abstain from the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to receive and file, while Councilman Shanks?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, just to clarify the motion, the motion would be to approve the items in the consent calendar, not simply receive and file.
I'm sorry. Yep. Approve the, approve the items on the consent calendar. Please vote. And for the record, that was a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilman Miller. All right, there are no items removed from the consent calendar, no public hearing, no unfinished business, no new business. And so I am now going to adjourn and move us into the successor agency. I'd like to call the successor agency into order. Roll call, please.
Karen Deaton?
Here.
Board Member Levitt?
Here.
Board Member Miller?
Here.
Board Member Shanks?
Here.
Board Member Sloan?
Here.
All right, at this time, are there any oral communications? Anyone that would like to speak to the successor agency on matters in its jurisdiction? Seeing none, I would like to move on and get a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Moved. Second.
Please vote. That's five zero, and now I would move that we adjourn for this evening, and thank you for a very good evening, and I would like for Councilman Miller, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Levitt to note the time. Thank you very much.
Ah, yes, you win, I lose.
The kind of music you never get tired of, because it just goes on and on and on forever.